I will call the January 11th, 2018, meeting of the Falmouth zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Happy New Year, everybody. Let me begin by asking everyone to please silence their cellphones if you haven't already done so, and also by introducing the board. So from your left, Jerry Potamus, who's an alternate member of the board but will be sitting on everything tonight. TJ Hurry, who's vice chair of the board. I'm Ken Foreman, Chair of the Board. Ed Van Kuren, who's acting as our clerk tonight. Paul Murphy, voting member of the board. Robert Dugan, who's associate member of the board but also will be sitting on all the hearings tonight. So I'm sure, as many of you know, we're charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and considering requests for special permits, appeals, variances as provided by the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's office. Our goal is to hear full and fair testimony on every project and discussion prior to rendering a decision, and so the process works a little like, works hopefully exactly like this. At the beginning of each hearing, we'll ask the clerk to read a public announcement of the hearing and any relevant correspondence or referrals through the file, and then we will give the applicant or the applicant's representative 15 minutes to make a presentation. If additional time is required, you can request that, and by vote of the board, we can grant it. We will then, the board will then question the applicant, and then we will invite the public to comment. If you wish to comment, please raise your hand, wait to be recognized, go to the podium and state your name clearly for the record. That way, your voice is picked up by the television and also our recording secretary can get down your name clearly. We ask that people confine their comments to two minutes, and obviously, we ask people not to be repetitious. Please refrain from discussions among yourselves out there. Everything should come through the chair from the podium, or through the board. Once the board feels they've had enough information, we will vote to close the hearing and then take it under consideration. We may have some discussion, we may decide to vote or to continue consideration. We also may decide we don't have enough information tonight and continue the hearing to a date in the future, which you'll all be invited to come back, obviously. An affirmative vote of four members, that's a supermajority, is required for special permits, variances, and appeals. Okay, so, we have tonight one new hearing and three continuations. The first hearing is 097-17. Ellis, 39, Rebecca Ann Lane, a special permit for home occupation. And Ed, why don't you read the announcement?
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11, Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Gary and Mary Ellis of East Falmouth, Mass. applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240, 162-F of the Code of Falmouth to allow home occupation for a bakery on subject property known as 39 Rebecca Ann Lane, East Falmouth. And there's two letters of support in the file.
Do you want to read the referrals, Ed?
The application through the public, right away, no site work or work within the right of way proposed for no further comment.
You might mention who it's calling from.
I think that was engineering.
It had to be engineering, it doesn't say. From the Fire Department, correspondence concerns application 9717 for a special permit to allow home occupation for a bakery. Depending on the cooking operation, the appliances being used, the applicants may have to meet the requirements under the NFPA Commercial Cooking Code. Please feel free to contact the fire prevention officer. That's it.
Okay. Someone here for the applicant?
You had to pass the plans.
Why don't you come forward and give us an explanation of what it is you're proposing to do?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Is Bob Dugan sitting on this one? Is that what you had said earlier?
Two, three, okay, so we have one extra person?
Yes.
That's fine, Bob can sit on this one.
You said he was sitting on all the hearings earlier, so...
Yeah, and so I misspoke.
Okay.
Did I misspeak?
He's sitting on all the continuations, so I just wondered, but you had said that, so...
Okay.
You ready?
Yes, go ahead, and state again, state your name, please.
Mary Ellis.
And I'm Gary Ellis.
And we approached the town three years ago...
A little louder.
We approached the town three years ago to have a home business, and Board of Health issued us a license, and it wasn't until a neighbor dispute that it was brought, that we were not correctly zoned. We came from the vineyard, I had a business for over 30 years on the vineyard. We needed to downsize, we needed to rebuild the house that was attached to the bakery there. It was going to take a very long time. It forced me into a life decision to slow down and spend more time with my young son. That's why I even approached the town here. I, when they said yes, and he came and he gave me the license and I moved forward, I saw that I could make a living and still spend time with my son at home, and that's what I'd like to continue to do.
So Board of Health granted you the...
Board of Health granted me after I had called him and asked him legally, can I do this? I'm making a big life decision, and he took about two calls to him, to Dave, I don't want to pronounce his last name incorrectly, Cock. And he finally got back to me, and he came probably within a week and inspected. And then last year, I made another decision, we had sold the house on the vineyard, I had a little extra, and I renovated my kitchen so that I could move forward with this. And that was completed in March of this year, and I had two ovens put in to keep up with some of the demand.
Yeah, we had talked to the Fire Department at the time when we were doing that, and there's two residential ovens.
Residential.
One's electric and one's gas.
Like a wall oven and a regular, like...
Okay, so you did...
They're both getting out of crane.
Both, yeah, picked up from crane appliance.
So you did talk to the Fire Department, they were happy with...
Okay, and I had...
As long as it's regular residential equipment, like anyone else is going to buy, you, then it's fine, because it's not, I mean, it's strictly residential, it's not commercial anything of any kind.
And I had also spoken with the gas inspector as well, yeah. So I guess that's...
Okay, you want to tell us just a little bit about maybe the volume of business that you do, or...
Being on the island for so many years, I have a lot of clientele on the vineyard. I have many summer residents that have homes there, that have weekly orders that I supply to them. I use the commuter boat that delivers the pan, dev, and yawn, and all the bagels, and newspapers, I use that boat, they're friends of ours. And I meet people in Woods Hole, I've met people at Tedeschi's, I've met people at Friendly's, I've met people at Walmart, all over the place.
But for any amount of, we have regular refrigerator freezer, like anyone else is going to buy, it's all strictly residential. We got 18 deliveries...
In a year.
Stock this year, 18 times a truck in the coming supplies.
That's for this year?
For this year, yeah.
Last three weeks?
No, no, no. 2017.
No, all, sorry, excuse me.
I forgot his name.
Sorry.
I would say my highest volume was 100 in a week, that was 4th of July weekend.
So 100 pies.
100 pies for the whole week. Thanksgiving, I did 35, 40, maybe. Not a huge volume, not what I was used to.
Anything else you want to say before I open it up for board questions?
No.
Okay. Robert, why don't you start?
So, on your deliveries, so, what type of vehicle comes in? Is it box truck deliveries, or how many times a year, or...
18 times a year.
Like you said, 18 times a year, it's a six, 10, six-wheel, a box truck.
And that's just for pickup deliveries, or are there additional trips for bringing you stock, or...
No, that's to bring us stock, yeah.
One delivery.
It's All-American, is the company. They sold out to US.
When they do do the pickups and deliveries, is there space within the yard that they park, or how does that, how's that handled?
They back in the driveway.
And do you know what the percentage of the living space in the house is being used for the home occupation, approximately?
We submitted the paperwork.
Submit the paperwork for that.
I don't have the exact...
Off the top of my head, I think it's like less than 10%.
What about signage, in general? Do you have signage out there now?
We do.
One side.
Two by two, which has always been two by two.
It's also a problem as well.
Anything else, trash containers, or anything else you use outside with the business?
No.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anything, Paul?
Yeah, did you seek the guidance of the building commissioner at all prior to commencing your operation?
Building commissioner, no.
You didn't, okay. So this is an after-the-fact filing? Okay. All right, that's all I have at the moment.
Do you believe you follow the state laws?
Yes.
As far as it's not a wholesale operation?
It is not a wholesale operation.
Yeah, we are following every law that there is.
Says it on Facebook.
We're supposed to see the zoning board tomorrow, we've been seeing you three years ago.
If you could expand a little bit more on your business model, so you bake your pies in the kitchen, that's obvious, when it comes to deliveries and such, you hinted at that you drive and you meet people on location to deliver the pies?
It's all personal vehicles, I'll load up the car, take it personally, running it off. I'll call me people.
Does anyone come to your house to pick up the pies?
They have, but the majority, 90% of my business, is off-site.
90% of the site?
It is 90.
And you two are the only employees of the business?
He is not an employee.
We're, yeah, we don't, there aren't any.
I am sorry.
Just you?
Yes.
All right, that does it for me.
Okay. Anything more, Jerry?
A couple of things. I noticed she did submit verification of the sign. I don't know if you've gone back to the zoning official downstairs, because she had submitted a letter, the location of the sign and the size of the sign.
Oh.
That seems to have been resolved, but maybe the prudent thing would be ask her to come back out, or whatever you do.
Are you speaking of a question?
Yes.
Yeah, we sent in pictures to show we moved it that day, and she mentioned it, I moved it right away.
Okay.
But we didn't get a chance to see it, to have her come look back.
No, no, I just...
I wrote pictures of all of that, so...
The permit says person-to-person sales, but the fact that you're on the internet and, so people send you requests for the pies on the internet?
Yes.
I mean, I just don't know, and we might have to continue this, is, I don't know if that's considered person-to-person, or whether it comes close to being a commercial. I know you say you're not, but right now, I'm not sure what the definition of a commercial bakery is versus a residential, other than what your permit says, it's supposed to be person-to-person, because if it was commercial, you'd need inspection, well, I think at least inspection by the state.
Well, there's, in 2000, there was cottage laws put into effect for any residential kitchen, bakery, home business.
State of Massachusetts.
Have you heard of cottage laws?
I haven't, but I guess we'll find out before...
And that's what the state...
Well, my recommendation would be...
Because we are strictly residential, don't fall within commercial codes, so we can't do things commercial, but we also don't follow anything commercial.
And don't have the volume to be a wholesale...
We don't have the volume.
Okay.
We can look at through that, cottage laws.
And then, as far as the internet, that's like someone calling on your phone and saying, I'd like to order a pie, and we'll say, okay, Tuesday, come pick it up, or we can meet it. That's the person-to-person sale.
And most times, they're running late for the boat, so I offered to meet them so that they don't have to make that extra time out.
So those sales, what, three or four pies, or 20 pies?
I've had a person order for 4th of July party, he ordered 15 at once, and I deliver them in a box.
What would be the average delivery? Oh, you, that, you know, you mean...
Three or four, like you said, maybe just one.
I've done just one.
No further question.
You said you had 18 deliveries from the All-American, what's in a delivery? How much stuff?
10 pieces.
Oh.
Frozen fruit, flour, sugar, butter, brown sugar, oats, shortening.
And this all can fit in your residential freezers?
We have two refrigerators and two freezers, strictly residential, they're from crane pies.
I have one refrigerator for business, I have one freezer for business.
And, so if I saw your site on the internet and I lived in California, and I wanted you to send me some pies, would you do it?
No. Within Massachusetts, yes, California, no.
Any estimate on the number of pies per year that you bake?
I'd say the peak...
So if you did 100 in a month, 1500 pies, I mean, is that...
I would say less than that, more than...
How many pies can you get out of a truckload?
Probably 80 to 100.
So if you have 18 truckloads, you probably have...
1800, if we figured that, yes.
Somewhere between 1500 and 2000 pies.
Right.
Any other board questions before we open it up to the public?
Yeah, just one question regarding on the internet. Besides the vineyard, there was a post that you also delivered to Randolph and Stoughton, so, distance-wise, what other areas in Massachusetts do you commonly deliver to, just that area?
It's because I have family up there.
It's mostly family, summer customers that...
So you, and you, so you would deliver them yourself in your own vehicles?
Saw family and brought the pies.
Went, saw, moved in.
Actually, I do have one more question myself. So do you have any designated parking for customers or for the delivery truck?
No.
Our driveway is very long, wide, and that's it.
So, if someone needs, wants to come and pick up pies, there's plenty of room in the driveway, they can come.
There's room for seven cars in my driveway, at least.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Before they leave, it might be a matter of discussion. Is there a vehicle size limitation on home-based businesses? I think like landscaping, there was, we got into...
Well, they don't own a vehicle, so...
This is a home occup, they're planning for a home occupation, not a home-based service business.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Right. So I mean, your, the vehicles you use are just your personal vehicles, right? They're not owned by...
No.
They're registered in my name.
Yeah, we're not, business.
Okay, let's see what the public has to say, can sit and, or if the public has anything to say. Yes, sir?
Hello, everybody, my name is Jeff Barnum. I reside next to the Ellis's at 36 Rebecca Ann Lane. My wife and I have owned the home for 16 years. We purchased it about a year after it was built. So we've been the neighbors of the Ellis's for these last 16 years, and I must say, things have gone generally pretty well, until about, in August, I came back to my home and found my mailbox completely trashed, and on the back of my porch, Mr. Ellis approached me and said, hey, my son ran into it, and made some excuses, little eight-year-old son ran into this. When in fact, it was probably one of these 30-foot box trucks that backed into the driveway on a regular basis that they've already indicated that do this, and fundamentally, if it broke, okay, fine, I'm okay with that. There was no apology, there was no means of saying, hey, we'll take care of it, and on and on it goes. If people had a business in the vineyard, I really have a hard time understanding that they don't understand the laws of the state or the laws of the town, and how could you get a health permit without having to go through the rest of the process? So I find that these people, and I thought they were friendly, continue to just violate things and approach upon me and my family in a way that is just not very friendly at all, not respectful, not friendly. He got into a border war with me, trying to steal things from my property.
Let's stick to the nature of the business, okay, rather than derogatory...
Well, the nature of the business is fine, if it stays in the house, it's fine, it's the vehicles that are coming in and out. My neighbor next door, who co-filed the complaint with me, put an orange cone in his driveway to stop people from flipping and turning around. It's a very small cul-de-sac, it's very small, and for this truck to maneuver around, it has to do some maneuvering in the cul-de-sac, was using my driveway, was using my neighbor's driveway on a regular basis, to the point where he put a cone in, a construction cone in his driveway. And that shouldn't have to be, if a person owns a property, you shouldn't have to put a cone in your driveway so people don't turn around there.
So is the issue primarily the delivery trucks, or is there an issue with people coming to pick up pies?
It's the delivery trucks and the border war, where my neighbor continued to stake and claim property and land, clearly, that's not his.
That's obviously not, that's beyond the purview of this board, right?
No, but it just goes to the general behavior of this couple, that they think they could take the neighborhood, they could take the residence, and do what they wish with it, breaking my property, destroying my property, and no regard to replacing it or trying to even make amends. And it goes on and on. And fundamentally, and then we have, we have, we see out-of-state license plates pulling in on a regular basis, they're selling out of their home, they're advertising out of their home, they're advertising on Facebook, if you've read their Facebook posting, and in fact, they have complete disregard for this board, they call this whole process a nightmare. So I, you know, fundamentally, is that, is that, is that the way we want to do business? I love to see business and people be successful, I love it. I'm a senior manager in a very successful company, I love to see people do things, I'm a fan of Shark Tank, but the fact that, when people just violate the law and stick it in your face and think it's okay, it's not okay. It's not okay. I brought this complaint because of the broken things, but it became a cyclical problem with these people, very cyclical, where they would violate my property, assume it's theirs, and then to the point where I realized, okay, if we're going to play war, we'll play war, let's find out what happened. In fact, I started out seeking a survey quote myself, just to get this border thing out of, knocked down and finished. Then I realized, okay, well, maybe they don't even have the proper business permit, that's when it dawned on me, if we're going to play hardball, we'll play hardball. And sure enough, three years, these people have not been playing by the rules and running a business, a very successful business, out of their home.
So our bylaws do allow for home-based, for home...
With the proper permits.
With the proper permits.
Now, how could that have happened?
I think the question for you that's important is, in the operation of the business, what should this board consider in terms of any conditions that would make the operation run more smoothly with less intrusion to the neighborhood?
I don't want to see these large trucks coming up and down the neighborhood. I don't understand why a 30-foot box truck has got to come next to my home. This is not insignificant, this is not a small pickup truck.
Right. Well, how is that different, for example, from a FedEx delivery truck that might show up?
FedEx delivery truck didn't destroy my mailbox.
No, that's true. It's conceivable that it could, if the driver was careless.
If there was respect, and I, again, 16 years have gone by, where I've, you know, and the last three of which, I didn't mind this, okay? I want this, I want to make sure they had the right permits, did they pull the permit when they redid their kitchen? I don't know. It makes you think of a lot of questions, where they circumvent the law, okay? If, that's the first thing, I want, I want to make sure everything is proper and legal, play by the rules like everyone else in the state has to do. I play by the rules, everyone in the room, I'm sure, plays by the rules, that's number one. Number two, I want to make sure that this game of the Ellis's is trying to take on additional land and put their signage, they removed the signage after I put the complaint up, they had a signage on their garbage bins out in the very front of the property. They took that as soon as I put the complaint into the town. They had two signs. One has come down because of my complaint. My neighbor would have been here tonight, but he couldn't make it, and he's got the same concerns.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, we hear your concern.
Oh, I might have one comment. You can go online and find out each property, what permits have been pulled, it's a very good system.
I could find that?
Yes. I can't tell you how to drug it, but...
I know, I pulled the permit when I put a new roof on this past summer. I play by the rules, and I think everyone needs to play by the rules, that's why we have it, and that's why you guys are here, and I appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public with any comments on this? Okay, if there's no other public comment, what would the board like to do?
Some discussion?
Sure.
I mean, how many homes are on Rebecca Ann Lane? Does anyone know?
The map is in the file, right underneath the application.
Morning concerned, the butter. Just trying to get a read on, you know...
Well, I think, I think that the question for us is, is there any kind of condition that would be relevant to the operation?
So they're...
Confine deliveries to a certain time of day, or what?
So they're, they're applying under the home occupation, so...
No more than one month, or, you know, I don't know.
So 240-162D under home occupation states that no traffic shall be generated in greater volume than would normally be expected, so...
In a residential neighborhood, nor which jeopardizes traffic safety.
So, just the addition of the 18 trips of the 10-wheeler is against this part of the home occupation?
One, that's one a month.
Yeah, but it's not, no traffic shall be generated in greater volume than would normally exist anyways, they're bringing in larger vehicles that wouldn't normally exist.
But it is about the size of a large UPS truck.
But it says it wouldn't normally exist, so if you, if you think about neighborhoods in general, you expect that you could have mail delivery, package delivery, in all neighborhoods, but this is specific to the business, not to general deliveries to the neighborhood. I just would think that that wouldn't, I think that's a problem with the home occupation.
So if we think about other home occupations we've permitted, small, I mean, a home-based... small, I mean, home-based service businesses, obviously, you know, small plumbers, that kind of thing.
They're limited to thirteen thousand.
Tailoring. Anything that where people might be selling out of their home, some modest increase has been allowed.
So, even if you, even if you looked at the, um, the home-based, which mentions an actual, you know, thirteen thousand pound for trucks, how much does a ten-wheeler box truck weigh?
Substantial.
Is that in excess of thirteen, I mean, I don't know much about weight.
Oh, yeah, that's significant, yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely see a point where you, it's...
So, if there, I guess the question is, is there any, which we might ask the applicant, is there any other way they could get their goods?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean, if they could get their goods off-site, then to...
I mean, if they're generating the amount of pies that they say, it's hard to imagine you need such a large truck to deliver it. Or could they go off-site and collect the flour or whatever it is, stuff? As, you know, some, I don't know.
You meant the parking lot, canyons across the street.
Exactly.
No, I didn't say that.
Yes, but we're gonna ask you for input on that, so, just, we're trying to...
What, you know, what bothers me about these things are complaints. A lot of times, home-based businesses are granted where there's, uh, no, uh, butter input, no one's registered any opposition, and those are obviously the easiest to grant. But, um, I think, you know, feel this out and see what the real concerns are and see what, um, what can be done about the objections. But, um, yeah, complaints bother me about a home-based business because, uh, there shouldn't be any.
Right. The idea was that if you're operating your business, you're doing it in a way that doesn't disrupt the neighborhood.
I, I do think we're gonna need some additional information from the health agent, 'cause in his response regarding the permit that he's already given, he wasn't really sure if that covered deliveries versus a person driving to the house, picking up their one pie and, you know, purchase. It, it was, it was very ambiguous, and it seemed like he was gonna check in with the state to see what his actual permit covers.
Well, he submitted the link to the state, and I copied it, and it is in the file. I did send it to you guys this afternoon around two, two-thirty, I think it was. And although, remember, my emails haven't worked for three days, but that link is in there. Um, it's right there, Ed, I think you have it.
Yeah, I have it open here now.
And it does limit a certain amount, but my conversation with David Carrigan, and what he wasn't sure of is, you know, they take it to Woods, to, um, the Patriot, they hand-deliver it to the boat, somebody is on the other side to pick it up. They're doing it personally. I, I think one of the concerns was, how do they get it to Stoughton and Randolph where they advertise as well? And they stated that they deliver that personally. And they stated that it's not a wholesale business. I think that covers what the state was saying, and Dave said...
So, Ed, what is that?
It said, to the answer to the question, are there any personnel or personal marketing or volume restrictions for the residential kitchens? Yes. First, only household members may be employed by the, in the operation. Second, you use the brokers, wholesalers, or warehouses by residential kitchen operation, operators. To store, sell, or distribute food in residential kitchens is prohibited. So, it appears that they're not violating that.
Shall we hear from them with regard to the possibility of changing the nature of the deliveries?
Yeah, a quick question also on, I think the applicant mentioned grandfathered by cottage-based businesses. I have no idea what that is, if it's applicable. Wish she'll come up and explain. I think it was cottage-based industries, or cottage...
It's called cottage, no?
Cottage class.
You should come back up and we'll...
It's totally different than a home occupation.
Okay, I didn't know.
This is a home occupation that they started a few years ago.
Okay.
So, this, there's nothing grandfathered in about this.
No. Okay.
So, what about the possibility of changing the, the way you get the goods delivered?
I had approached my distributor, they will not meet me in a parking lot.
Insurance?
For their insurance reason. But mainly because they come into our road, they turn around without using anybody's driveway, and back right into my driveway.
I think there's a picture of the files.
Yes, but it's no different than that, right?
Yeah, there's pictures of the files.
What that is, is, many, we live next door to three teenage boys. We live next door to a woman whose brother and son get picked up almost every day to go to elder care, to go, um, he has Down Syndrome, to go to a program. Long buses, every single day. I don't know where, why, every car that goes in there, whether it be New York plates that Mr. Barnum himself has parked all over. Why is that mine? Where's the proof that it came into my driveway? Because we have a new woman who just moved in. Why is every traffic on that road is now, because I have a business, is now aimed at me? It's not. We have, like I said, many people on that road, many visitors to my next-door neighbor, many parties every week.
I think the only concern is the big truck. That's all that this board cares about.
This, this gave a picture of a car and a truck that came into our neighborhood.
Yeah, I was just gonna tell my...
It's the same-sized truck.
Now...
Right, but it doesn't show up eighteen times a year.
If everybody else, it doesn't show eighteen times in a year.
No, but they have FedEx, UPS, every single day.
I, I agree that those, those trucks are, but this is a specific business that you're running that requires this additional traffic on the roadway. So, so, we're just looking for, is there a possibility, I mean, is the only way, uh, this is American?
All-American.
All-American foods, now U.S. foods.
They don't have any other kind of delivery vehicle they can use?
No, and I've had them, I've been with them, and you get a percentage off because of royalty-based, you know, that means raising my price, that means lowering my profit.
See, they don't deliver it just to us to deliver.
Of course, of course, we, I, I understand.
So, no business is gonna stop and try to hold up a pickup truck to handle just one place. Or drop us.
And if I...
We'll be out of business.
If the... Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If they deliver to other businesses in Falmouth, could you meet them at that business is therefore possibly their insurance? I mean...
We've asked, but because of liability insurance, they said no.
For Hockenlot, but they're going to another business they're delivering to.
But now we're stepping on their property, and if, say, I slipped and fell, now you slide off.
It's a liability issue.
And that's why they, they wouldn't do it.
Yeah, no, that's a liability issue as well, Jerry.
I, and I have a question. Well, what I know about baking pies, you can fit in a thimble, but can you buy your products, um, elsewhere and bring them home? I mean, I, I just don't know the volumes that you're...
If I was to...
Because the objection is the traffic that seems to be in the truck.
Right, I get...
You can't source it anywhere else, just a question.
I get thirty-pound boxes of blueberries, I get thirty-pound boxes of peaches. If I was to go to Hyannis, is the nearest food store in bulk, not only is the price probably thirty-five to forty percent higher, it's gonna melt by the time I get home. I don't have a cooler big enough to box, you know, hold these boxes, I don't...
See, it's strictly a residential business, so, we have a regular freezer.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a...
You can only store so many boxes.
So, that's why I have it come often, more often than...
Okay. All right, thank you, yeah.
Okay. So, again, I, you know, from the point of view of this board's consideration, this is, um, think about some of the landscaping businesses that we've permitted. Is this more impactful, less impactful?
Well, I think you gotta separate the two, because that's, they park on their own property. So, and I think that's different, and it requires a special permit. Those, those vehicles for thirteen thousand stay on that property. It has nothing to do with a delivery truck.
But once a day, they leave, and once a day, they return.
Correct, correct.
So...
Can I make one more point?
That's a daily excursion, not eighteen times a, a year.
Right, exactly. And if they were in this area, they would be asked to buffer their equipment and stuff.
Sure.
This is a delivery truck.
No, I understand. I'm actually arguing that I think there's less impact with this.
Right.
Can I make one more statement?
Sure.
This truck comes in, literally, he's not even there fifteen minutes. Mr. Barnum has never seen this truck. Comes at twelve o'clock, he's in Shrewsbury. He, he's on the weekends, it has never come on a weekend.
We have photos in the file of the truck, so clearly, someone's seen it.
Yes.
Right, well, it's not invisible.
Rick has seen it.
Right, but we also have two other neighbors that are right on the other side, so Rick, that say that...
Remind me how long you've been operating?
In Falmouth, three years.
Just three years. But you've been neighbors for longer than that?
I have not been Jeff Barnum's neighbor for sixteen years.
Okay.
He's the third owner of the home, so...
Is it, is it possible to narrow down the time of deliveries? Like you said, they come at noontime. I'm not sure what the best time is for you or the neighbors.
Well, we did that on purpose, uh, purpose.
One time, they came at seven in the morning, and I put it on.
So, what time do you prefer if the...
I tell them they cannot come on the property.
I, I just...
Between nine and three is what we have on the sheet.
On the sheet, and on their little talisman thing, their computer. It is strictly written on there to not use anybody's property. No driveways, nothing. And it's on their little computer, that's the specific information on it. We've done every step to make it.
And as tight as that road is, they've never once used that house's driveway.
And if...
Do you know what days they deliver?
They deliver on Tuesdays and Fridays.
So, that's consistent, shot of weather.
Well, if it was weather, they wouldn't show up on Tuesday.
At all, yeah, they wouldn't show up at all.
And when you're baking, do you keep the windows open so it smells?
That hasn't enticed him.
So, the deliveries are made so they don't interfere with school bus traffic and different things like that?
It's summertime, really, I don't have any business, it's dead, in, until Easter. Easter, I start getting...
What kind of pies?
Fruit pies, I have specialty cookie pies that I've created. I do wedding cakes and birthday cakes, coffee cakes, and I have a man who gets about twelve dozen cookies every month. So, it's a wide variety.
Okay. Again, I think we've, we've got the picture.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we would like a little more information from the health op, so we could continue.
Excuse me, Ed, can I ask one more question?
Yes, please, but you need to come forward.
I guess I'm confused on the definition of occupation versus a business. And where on the slippery slope does this become a, a commercial business?
Well, it, the...
An occupation's making bracelets and going to a craft fair. That's an occupation in making, you know, a hundred bucks a weekend. This is thousands of pies.
There are, there are home occupations for other bakeries that this board has approved, and it depends on their, their permit from the Board of Health, and that's why they're discussing possibly getting maybe a little bit more information. The state link is there, and the information is in the file.
But is there a, is there a definition of a, because now, I'm afraid, you know, you go down this path, how many other of the neighbors will, I'll be living on a commercial street before you know it?
Well, I think if this board does approve it, they're gonna condition certain things, and it's gonna have to, they may have to report or check in with the Board of Health, and the Board of Health, maybe they'll have to keep a log of how many pies and if anybody else delivers the pies for them.
I mean, there is, there is a definition in our bylaw.
Yeah.
Uh, but it doesn't stipulate the size of the business, right? There's not a hard, it's not like, okay, if you do more than ten thousand dollars a year, you're, you know, you're... It's not written that way.
Maybe you should consider to me.
Use of a dwelling, right. Use of a dwelling unit or accessory building that is clearly incidental and subordinate to its use for residential purposes by its family residents, clearly, in this case, the family residents are the people doing it, for employment involving the manufacturer provision or sale of goods and/or services. For purposes of this definition, a home occupation must be owned and operated by the resident of the premises. So, again, clearly, they meet most of that pretty well.
I understand that, and I read that myself. I just trying to understand, where does the crossover, and now, and now, the...
That's, that's really why we have...
Because they have commercial deliveries, clearly.
It's, it's why we have a zoning board, a citizens' board, to sit here and weigh the concerns of the butters against the rights of the people who want to do it and, and sort of try to come to a, a sort of a balanced decision about what's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair.
And the same, same goes for a, a home occupation for a plumber. They have commercial deliveries as well, dropping off PVC pipes, different things like that, so... And that's considered, the home occupation was made for people like that, so they operate out of their home. But again, the degree in the commercial versus the home occupation, is there permit that the Board of Health did issue?
I did. Sorry, I did click on the link that the Board of Health submitted, and it's basically that fact sheet that's in the file. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but it's almost verbatim. It is, it's the same law.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's up to the board, but we can either close the hearing, take it under consideration, close the hearing, make a vote, continue the hearing if we want some additional input from the Health Department or Fire Department or anyone else.
What, what additional information do you think we can get out of the Health Department?
Um, I don't know.
I don't know.
I, you know...
I think this is it.
I don't know, I think...
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not concerned about the Health Department.
I think the biggest concern is that truck.
Yeah.
If you guys want more information from Dave, I think the only information that you could possibly get from him is the fact that he's comfortable with what they're doing. He has inspected it, maybe they need to sit and talk to him and explain the volume and stuff like that, but I, you know, it's, it's up to the board, I, I'm at a loss as to what you want.
I think we have a picture of the volume, it's on the order of fifteen hundred to two thousand pies a year.
They have a, they have a residential kitchen. It's not commercial like it was before on the Vineyard.
Their testimony is they've, they've asked about, you know, alternatives for delivery, and apparently, this is it from this supplier.
Well, if the board wants to go forward, what you can do is do what you've done in the past. Do an administrative review in a year to see if there's any issues with any...
Well, that would be a reasonable compromise, and then, okay, so...
They've already stated that they, they won't use the driveways of the other people.
Hopefully, they can resolve any differences with the butters and, uh...
Give them a year to do it.
Yeah.
And that those deliveries do not come at those peak times of buses and different things. That's crucial with the kids.
Yeah, and I, I think the board has been sympathetic to people trying to make a living on Cape Cod and trying to, so long as the impacts are not too great on the neighborhood.
So, what does the board want to do?
So, we need a motion to close if we're gonna do that.
Make a motion to close.
Okay, Ed moves to close the hearing, is there a...
Second?
Second.
Seconded by TJ. And then, if we're going to, um, move to grant this permit, then we need a motion to that effect as well.
Or deny it.
Or deny it. What's the pleasure of the board?
Hello.
I am fortunately the chair, so I am not going to make the motion.
I could make a motion, but I'm not allowed.
No, you're not.
Not on this one.
I'll make a motion that we, to proceed to approve it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Ed.
Ed moats, makes a motion to approve, and we'll have some conditions, I'm sure.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Findings?
Well, findings on the, the volume, I guess, not to, roughly on the order of two thousand pies per year. I think the, another important finding is the number of deliveries. They stated it at eighteen. You might want a condition that limits it to some number.
No more than twenty?
Yeah.
I, I just since they said approximately.
I think they're thinking out loud what I was thinking.
Findings first.
But, but we're into findings.
Yep.
Finding is that the, they have, since they said, two residential ovens?
It's a residential kitchen, right?
Right, it's a residential kitchen.
Yeah, just say residential kitchen instead of listing everything.
No commercial.
No outside employees.
No outside employees.
Family-run business.[1793.74]
I'm sorry?
Family-run business.
Yeah. That their deliveries are confined to.
Personal.
The state, I guess, regionally, right?
I guess. Person-to-person sales, I mean, that's.
Well, they didn't use that terminology, so let's not put it in there.
Who didn't use it?
That they deliver all the pies or people come to their house.
But isn't that a requirement of a residential kitchen under state law?
We didn't, we didn't define person-to-person through your discussion.
We want to say no wholesale.
Okay.
Yeah. One thing we didn't find out is how many times people come to their house on a weekly basis, which would have been important, but.
Sounded from the testimony like mostly they.
Ninety percent of the business. Okay. Testimony was that it's only approximately 10% of the gross floor area?
Yes. And they've also stated that they control the delivery times with a distributor.
And I think findings is that there was a letter verifying the, they meet the fire safety requirements and the health requirements in the file, right? And then, conditions.
Well, it was testimony that a residential kitchen doesn't require.
Require what?
See Fire Department referral.
Yes.
Okay.
Deliveries nine to three?
Should we put some restriction on number of deliveries per year?
Approximately 18, I hope.
Well, I mean, why don't we say not more than 20 deliveries? They've said they get 18.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
And that we're going to revisit the, this in one year.
Yeah.
Can we condition that they keep a log so we know when the deliveries occur and?
Could.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, so they could present it in a year.
We also.
Well, I'm sure they know that based on their sales and where everything's going, so it shouldn't be too much harder to just.
No, I don't think it's a hard.
Nine to three deliveries? One piece of paper.
She said nine to three.
Timing nine to three, that was actually in there.
I'm assuming, do we concern about whether it's road race weekend or Fourth of July weekend?
I don't think you need to worry about that.
It doesn't affect that area pretty much. If they can get to the boat, more power to them. So nine to three, no more than 20.
Monday through Friday?
Meet the requirements of 24162 A through E, right?
Monday through Friday? No, it was Monday through Saturday. Monday through Saturday.
I don't think there were any weekend deliveries.
She said Tuesday and Friday.
They said Tuesday, Fridays.
Oh, I thought they said Saturday. Okay.
Okay, and as I said, or as Ed said.
One year.
One year.
Yeah.
And you want a one-year review?
One-year review.
You're not holding them to a one-year special permit, you're holding them to a one-year review?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you feel, have we articulated this suitably?
Yeah, I think so. You think so?
Yeah.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I. Okay, so you may go forward. Obviously, be sensitive to the concerns of your neighbors.
Try to get along. One-year review will be from the time that your decision was filed with the town clerk. I'll let you know when that is. Okay.
Okay, that brings us to our next hearing, which is a continuation. Lee Milt Petroleum, 40 Davis Straits in Falmouth. This is a proposal to build an urgent care facility. It's permit number 0170-17. And Ed, why don't you pass out? I think we, this has been read in already, so you don't want, is there anything new in the file?
They submitted revised plans based on the planning board's site plan review. There's a new elevation and a new facade to the building. Everything is pretty much the same. That gable top that you see there, that, based on the design the planning board agreed to, they would like to use that gable area up there as storage, and that is new to the floor plan.
And before, that was kind of squareish.
Right, and flatter. It's submitted to the file as well.
Looks just like CJ.
You're done, Ken.
Am I voting on this one?
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, on this one, we have myself, TJ, Kim is, who's not here, Ed, Robert, and so I guess one, two, so I guess you are.
It would have to be Jerry, because Paul missed the first hearing.
Jerry, you are.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ken Caputo with Caputo Project Delivery Solutions. I have a whole cast of characters here with me tonight. PB Slater, Limits Petroleum, the owner, Max Poyana, and Dave Sanderson from Convenient MD. Atlantic Investments.
I could use you, help.
Oh, we hope not. So we're here on the continuation. It's been a while. We did do a presentation before the board a couple of months ago. I have parts of that here tonight. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but just as a reminder, because it's been so long. We're at 40 Davis Straits and we are proposing a urgent care facility. Quick refresher on Convenient MD, promoting quality care, convenient and affordable. If you have any questions about that service and the operations, Max and David can answer those questions. They provide options to the emergency department, hospital-affiliated urgent care. You see their co-pay, whoop, I'm sorry, I pressed the wrong button, significantly lower, offering cost savings to the community and those that come here for, for services. And they're also one of the finer corporate citizens in the communities that they're in. They have extensive community service. They have partnership programs that they promote. And I think Falmouth is going to really enjoy having them here in town. To the matter of the zoning matter and our special permit. We're here for a special permit because we want to build the building within the front setback. I'll show you some existing condition plans as to how we can do that by a special permit. But before I get there, I just want to cap it off on Convenient MD's consistency with economic goals, the community in the region, adding to the living wage, providing services needed year-round, not seasonal. Wages are professional employment, leading employment sectors on the Cape are shown here, and more significantly, that healthcare is the key one. So our site is at 40 Davis Straits, right here. This is Davis Straits going straight up and down the page. This is Dillingham Avenue coming in from left to right. We're right on the corner. The existing site, as you know, is the site of Limits' former gas service station. And we've got this lovely picture of what's going on there. You have seen excavation and work there. That was the tank removal and remediation of the ground from those tanks. So Limits is committed to repurposing their site and their property in a way we hope that the town finds is very consistent with your vision and goals for the community. In context, you're looking at, we are just another example today of mostly paved lot surrounded by significant expanses of pavement. We seek to change that in our proposal for repurposing the property and redeveloping the property by adding a significant amount of green space on the property. Property is currently well over the lot coverage standards for this zone. We're going to bring it down to less than 70% below your maximum. And really, we seek to really clean up the corner significantly. Here's our existing lot. We have curb cuts, two curb cuts on Dillingham and two very wide curb cuts on Davis Straits. This is the service station building, and this is the pump canopy. And you'll see it's noted here that that pump canopy is just over four and a half feet from the property line. You're in this district and on this road, the front setback is 35 feet.
Excuse me, Ken.
So this represents.
Excuse me, can you talk into the microphone for the TV world?
So this represents a pre-existing non-conformance with your current bylaws. And this is what we're in here to talk about under the special permit process because of that non-conformance, not to be mistaken with a variance. Because we have this non-conformance, we seek to not exacerbate it, but improve upon it. But we have other site planning purposes as to why we don't want to put the building in, beyond the front setback. We do have the ability to build a property with the building inside, meeting those setbacks. However, that would require parking in the front of the building, along Davis Straits, and it doesn't provide the same quality site design that we seek. I'm going to highlight the changes because we did go over the site plan in some detail. And a couple of members commented, back here in this corner is our dumpster facility, and we had a parking space right here. And what we've done is we have, the suggestion was getting out of that last parking space and backing out, was there enough room? We revisited that. We did move the dumpster and the dumpster enclosure back so that the face of the enclosure is even with the rear line of the building. And another member commented on, we did not have any landscaping around that enclosure. That will be a solid enclosure, decorative. And so now what we've done is we've added landscaping on that perimeter. We also had added, previously, just to remind the board, we had added landscaping where there was none on the backside of the building. The 99 Restaurant and its parking lot is literally right on our, our property line, right up near our property line. So this will help green up the area between their parking lot and our new building. The original proposal was 5,100, just over 5,100 square feet. With the attic space for storage that were, is one of the changes, we're adding 750 square feet to that total square footage. The zoning with the total square footage would require 24 parking spaces. We already have planned for 30 parking spaces. The 30 parking spaces is a critical criteria to our tenant for the operation of their business. And it's something we, we worked hard on site design to accommodate that, and that's why the justification for the building in the front setback. As you can see, this building has room to slide back. It won't be beyond the rear setback, but we would lose this parking in the back. And really, from a, today's design goals in site planning and in this community's documented goals, more parking towards the rear is favored instead of parking in the front, instead of front field parking. So by allowing us to slide the building up into the front setback area, we're able to get the parking, slide the building, the parking back around the rear of the building. So we have a, most, half of our parking, almost half of our parking spaces are on our rear parking lot with a smaller space field to the side of the building, which is also favorable under all the guidelines that the community works from. Our net front setback is changing from four and a half feet to a proposed 15 feet, instead of pushing the building back all the way to 35 feet. And that's really the ask on the special permit. Other features we've done from the landscaping, we do have trees proposed along our frontage lines on both Dillingham and on Davis Straits. We have a mass area of front yard space that doesn't exist today. When you look, when we get to the building elevation, you're going to see that, that really gives a nice feel and complements the building well from the streetscape standpoint. The curb cuts are reduced to one on Dillingham at the rear and just one curb cut on Davis Straits. The wide curb cut down here on Davis Straits is going to turn into front yard, which would be a really nice complement to the building. Landscape features all around the building at different points to break it up, a little bit of a buffer on the back property line. And because we do have parking spaces over here that are going to face Dillingham, we have a evergreen hedge along the head of those spaces so that the, at night, no headlight glare points out onto the street. Consistency with plans, as you see, there's been a lot of recommendations to review zoning relative to front setbacks on Davis Strait and bring the street, buildings closer to the street. Again, part of that is to move the packing, parking back towards the rear. Reduce visual clutter and consolidate curb cuts. We sure have done that on, on this use, former use with those wide-open curb cuts. Increase landscaping and improve pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. We are going to be rebuilding the sidewalks all along our frontage. There currently is no sidewalk along Davis Straits on this side. There is one on the other side, but the sidewalk on our side ends on the other side of Dillingham. So when people walk up Davis Straits, they walk across a crosswalk, and they have to cross again to continue on the sidewalk down towards the town center. So we will be filling in that void with new sidewalk and providing sidewalk connection to our building. We have bike racks for bicycle access. We have outdoor seating for those that want to wait outside on the nice summer days and spring and fall days. I don't know if I would have waited outside this past week down here, but certainly in the summertime, it's, it's a charm. So the other big change from what you were presented with before is the architectural design of the building. We went through an extended review, and both the landowner's commitment and, more importantly, CMD's commitment and desire to be here really worked with the community that was providing comments, the planning board in particular, on architectural design that, working together, we finally got through a process that we think brought a, it's very different from their prototype. But it's something that we, working with the community, we hope you view as a compliment in architecture to the community. You see here, we still have our front entrance and our front accent feature here. It's just been turned into gables here. Mansard roofing, some pitched roof back here. Prior design was mostly a flat line. Clockboard siding, wooden columns, decorative, more, the window treatment has changed quite a bit on all elevations here. As you can see, this is the side facing Davis. This is the side facing Dillingham. With the attic space, we did have to change the height of the building. We're still below the zoning maximum. But we did have to change the height a little bit. Fortunately, our architects have been working parallel to the permit process. And late in the game, it was identified, Ed, Max had pointed out, that we initially had lost the opportunity for storage space above that front entry area. So we felt necessary that we wanted to include that in this application. It's still at a height that is similar to the height presented to you before. So there's really not much change. The architectural feature, all the trim, the gable, the roof lines, color, the windows, they're all the same. Just had to make a minor change to the elevation just so that in the event they need that storage space, it's part of the approval, it's part of the plan, and they can access it. This is a removed facility for most of their other facilities, and these urgent care facilities are required to keep quite a bit of records on the property. So it's very important that they have that with storage space. So finally, we think the design's consistent with studies and goals in town. We think, we know the use is favorable in terms of economic goals. Allowed of the special permit in the front setback, we do not see it as creating any kind of detrimental impact to the neighborhood or visual character. I think it's a huge enhancement. The landscaping and new building are tremendous improvements over former use and condition. And the streetscape, smaller curb cuts, expanded pedestrian improvements, all of that create this, are going to transform this corner into an inviting and a very attractive. this, are going to transform this corner into an inviting and a very attractive property. Questions?
Okay, let's see if there's any questions. Jerry, do you want to start?
No, I think it looks good. I have to make a point, a few people left. Okay. Thank you.
TJ?
The last time we met, I believe we were waiting for the stormwater report. I assumed that...
Yeah, that went to engineering.
Right.
And we had correspondence with engineering. We actually have, oop, there we go. I'm going to use this slide. We added, the driveway is cross-sloped towards this corner. We have a catch basin in here. And this driveway is cross-sloped towards this corner. We have a catch basin at the corner of the property line. All the drainage is being captured on the property. This is a low area in the landscape design. And actually, in that hedgerow, there's actually a filter strip of stone. And we regraded the parking lot, so all of this parking lot goes into that area. It's contained, it meets the twenty-five year, and Town Engineering Department was satisfied with our design.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think it's a big improvement from what we saw before. Good job.
Thank you.
I wasn't on here. It's fantastic. I can't wait.
We look forward to building it soon.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Nice job.
Yeah, no, the aesthetics are much better. I just had one question again. Why the right turn only lane on the main street? What was the restriction idea on that one?
The, in your, in studies prepared by the town, it's envisioned and probably needed now, but probably won't happen for a couple of years, that this intersection with Dillingham be signalized. And once there's a traffic signal there, you don't want left turns coming out of that driveway because there will be a queue that's not moving during a red light.
On both sides.
So we talked to Max, and again, they thought it was important to set up a, an operation that's built to last, not just for today's conditions. Yes, turning left out of there today would be turning, like turning left out of Dillingham. It's not, you'll wait, you'll wait for openings in the, in the gaps. But in the near future, we think, when the traffic signal comes in there, that would be a difficult matter and something that the town and the landowner and tenant would have to contend with in the design development of that intersection. We'd rather set ourselves up now so that we're not a problem in the future.
That's all I had.
Okay, so the current building setback from twenty-eight now is what?
Fifteen.
The proposed.
The proposed fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen feet.
And it's supposed to be thirty-five, you said?
Thirty-five is the current zoning. It pushes buildings way back. And it really, go ahead.
But the current one is four and a half.
Four and a half.
Okay. So this is a substantial improvement to the existing non-conformity.
Yes.
And that's the only thing that's non-conforming?
That's the only thing non-con, well, today, the existing lot is non-conforming.
In terms of lot coverage?
Lot coverage, but our design brings it into conformance.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's a solid presentation. Let's see if there's any concerns or comments in the public. Okay, if there's no concerns in the public. Sarie, do you have anything?
No, no. I can't wait. For your decision.
Someone on the board wants to... Yep. So Jerry moves to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved to second by Jerry and Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
And I. Move to approve. Okay. Want to make some findings?
No.
Do you want to get a second?
Let's go.
Get a second.
Okay, TJ seconds. So we have some pretty obvious findings. The first is substantial improvement to the front yard setback from four and a half to thirty-five.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, sorry. Oops. Yep. Thank you.
Improved drainage?
Reduction in lot coverage to meet conformity.
Improved curb cuts?
Testimony about the current drainage. Is the current drainage?
Improved curb cuts?
Reduction in curb cuts.
And the, the engineering, the drainage should be that they worked with the town engineer and improved the drainage on site.
Okay. We have an approved site plan from the Planning Board.
Do we, I guess we don't have to say, that's up to them on their property, no right turn. I guess it's up to the town or the state to make it legal.
I think that was part of the Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Oh, it was part of the Planning Board? Okay.
That curb cut is on State Highway. So we have to file for a permit to access State Highway with mast on.
With no right turn.
Okay, so... We're going to file it with no right turn.
And we've closed the hearing, so...
Yeah, no left turn, thank you.
It was clarification.
We've closed the hearing, so please no additional...
Ken, you can go ahead and sit down because the hearing's closed. Have a seat.
I meant no left turn.
No, no.
Mr. Chairman, I meant no left turn. That's part of the Planning Board.
Yes, no, that's part of the Planning Board. Site plan approved. I think we could make a finding that it's a, in terms of the use, that it's a good addition.
Serves the community.
Serves the community, yes.
This improves the community character. Maybe that serves the community.
Well, in term, but in terms of the use, it's a needed...
Service.
Okay, anything else, Jerry?
Consistent with community character. I think that was what Planning Board was pushing for.
In terms of gabeling and fibered siding and stuff like that?
If you don't think so, you can just, you were looking for conditions if it's not important.
Not conditions, but findings.
Findings. Did you guys discuss that? I mean...
Not really.
No.
It's under site plan review and we've got that.
Yeah, we just cite that we have an approved site plan review. That's a finding.
Two forty-two sixteen?
Well, now we're, yeah, sure.
Per plan?
Pretty much. It's it.
What else is there?
I'm short of buckles on.
Do you want a mask belt on the height or...
Yeah, so they're proposing thirty-four point eight, right?
I think it's thirty-four, eight inches.
Is it eight inches or point eight?
It's point eight.
Usually. You're an engineer, you're supposed to know that. Engineers don't use inches.
It's thirty-four point eight.
It's less than the max.
By point two.
It's eight inches.
Is it eight inches?
Four inches less than eight.
Yeah.
Can't hurt it.
So that's the question is, do we want an ass bill for the height?
Do you want a height certification?
Keep him honest.
Prior to final sign-off?
So that was you and TJ, right? Anything else to be added? Sarie, you happy with this?
I'm very happy.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I. Excellent project.
Thank you.
We look forward to... You're doing it.
It'd be nice to have pastries, pastries on after the holidays. Mr. Bass has been explaining.
It's like the best thing to happen to that corner in a hundred years.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Please. Thank you, Ken. Are you going to take a five minute break?
Okay, so we have one more continuation.
I guess not.
Pucciano, am I pronouncing it? Puccinio? Thirty-eight and three fifty Old Meeting House Road in East Valmont, which is an appeal of the building commissioner's decision.
And you will be turning it over to...
Oh-seven-nine dash one-seven.
TJ.
And in this case, Kim was on this, she's not here, so I'm appointing Jerry...
Excuse me?
Hmm?
You weren't here either, so you turn it over to...
Oh, so I'm not doing anything.
You turn it over to TJ, please.
So I'm turning it over to TJ. Look at that. There we go. So you can do the rest. Sorry.
And I'm still a voting member, right, TJ? That's what TJ said.
TJ will be appointing you as a voting member on this.
So Jerry will be appointing you as a voting member on this.
I'll just receive into the background.
Good evening, Mr. Acting Chair, Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Valmont, and I represent the applicant, the appellant, rather, Joseph Puccinio, the owner of JB Tree and Landscape and the owner of three fifty Old Meeting House Road. We're here tonight to continue our appeal of the building commissioner's determination. The board had a number of questions and some comments or concerns at the last hearing, which we sought to address. But before I dive into that, I want to take a moment to recap some of the relevant information. The property we're looking at is the former lots, three A, four and five on Hike and Way, now known as three fifty Old Meeting House Road. The appellant also owns three forty-eight Meeting House Road, Old Meeting House Road, which is located in the corner of the property, noted on the plan. This is located on the west side of Old Meeting House Road and is abutted to the south by Midway Trappin' Ski Club, to the west and north by Tony Andrews Farm, and to the east by a residence owned by Kenneth Andrews, who sold the property to Mr. Puccinio, and a lot owned by the applicant. He has recently purchased this property and obtained a special permit from the Planning Board for the operation of a contractor's yard for his landscaping and tree clearing business, JB Tree and Landscape. In connection with this contractor's yard, he seeks to prepare firewood at the site. Section two forty-three-seven E allows for a portable woodworking mill as an accessory use in the agricultural district. The building commissioner stated his opinion that splitting, that the use of a portable woodmill does not allow for splitting of wood into logs for firewood sale. That's why we're here this evening. The portable woodworking mill is defined in our bylaw as equipment for producing lumber from logs without permanent installation. The crux of the matter is the building commissioner feels that lumber refers exclusively to construction material. The bylaw doesn't define lumber, and as I noted in our last hearing, Marion Webster defines it as timber or logs. Most of what of all, actually, all of what I've addressed to this point was discussed in the previous hearing, so I'd like to address some of the questions and concerns that were presented. There's nothing in our bylaw that separates construction lumber from firewood. The process for deriving it is similar and largely indistinguishable. The only practical difference is when a sawmill is used for the, for creating construction material, it typically runs in a horizontal manner as opposed to vertical cutting of a log into smaller pieces for firewood. The board had requested additional case law. I did a pretty thorough search. I wasn't able to find any relevant Massachusetts cases regarding firewood and lumber or any cases that distinguish between firewood and lumber in the zoning context. Further, I wasn't really able to find any cases in any other jurisdictions on this point. Some of those cases, including some I submitted in our last hearing, make reference to lumber and firewood, but largely in interchangeable terms. I submitted two additional cases earlier this week, and today I was able to find an Oregon Supreme Court case, which does refer to certain grades of lumber as being rated for firewood quality, so I'm going to submit that to the board. Who will be clerk today?
Ed.
There was a question raised about this being an accessory use because an accessory use must be accessory to something, a primary or permitted use. As we noted, the applicant has obtained a special permit from the Planning Board for a contractor's yard. This is to run his landscaping and tree service business. He also intends at some point to make additional byright uses on the lot, specifically the agricultural allowance for growing and harvesting trees. It's important to note that raw wood from fell trees and from clearing lots, which is the purpose of his contractor's yard, is a byproduct of the permitted use. Splitting of wood through the use of this portable woodmill is accessory to that permitted use. What he's asking is specifically, is to specifically address this use and this byproduct. This isn't that similar from other contractor's yards. You have other contractor's yards that bring in loam or, or other materials, mulch, I'm sorry, mulch and loam and other materials, and they bring them in either raw or finished already, and they'll hold them on site, process them there until they're sold at a later date and brought to another site. This is the same process in reverse. They're taking a product from another site, bringing it here, and then using that byproduct, making that waste product into an active product. There was some concern over the size and nature of the operation. The applicant has no intent or desire to operate on a large scale. He wants to make a waste product into an asset. He has a storage area of approximately sixty by fifty feet, and it's been sketched here on, on this plan, shown on the sketch plan that was submitted to you earlier this week as well. On average, he sells approximately a hundred yards, a hundred cords of wood a year. Some years it might be up to as much as a hundred and fifty, but usually around a hundred. The space that we're showing here is insufficient to hold more than that. The mill he has cuts between two and three cords an hour. If he's selling a hundred to a hundred and fifty cords a year, we're talking about thirty to fifty hours in a year, not, not in a week, in a year. This is a small accessory usage, not a large-scale commercial operation. Boards and courts are generally try to interpret ambiguous provisions to avoid unreasonable results when the language is susceptible to a sensible meaning. As we've talked about, the engines of sawmills and log splitters are analogous. They go anywhere from ten horsepower up to sixty horsepower and higher. The equipment is equivalent in size and capacity. In this particular case, the applicant's machine has a small engine of approximately forty horsepower. The only difference is it's going to cut vertically, and the cut logs are then pushed onto a splitter to form smaller pieces. Sawmills for construction materials are going to cut in a horizontal manner, typically to plane the wood. What I did do at Mr. Van Curran's request is I obtained some pictures of, it's not the specific machine Mr. Puccinio has, but it's the same type and model. I have pictures of that as well as pictures of sawmills for construction materials of similar sizes. So I have four copies of each to submit to the board. Thank you. You'll see that the size of the sawmills for construction materials and the size of the wood splitting machines Mr. Puccinio uses are very similar in size. They're going to be similar in the type of engine, they're going to be similar in the type of impact they have. Given the, given the byright uses and the permitted uses on the site, coupled with the similarity of the engine sizes, the attendant noises, and in view in the light of the location of this particular lot, these uses are analogous. The only real difference, as we've mentioned, is, is the direction of the cutting of the wood. Any interpretation of the bylaw, which wouldn't include log splitting in this manner, is probably an unreasonable determination to be made. I think it's important and relevant that this lot be looked at and why this lot makes sense for the proposed uses. It is agriculturally zoned. It's abutted again by Midway Trappin' Ski Club to the south, the nearest point of which is the cell phone tower, it's about eight hundred feet from the skeet range, which you guys are all very familiar with at this point. It's abutted to the north and west by Tony Andrews Farm, which runs larger machines on a more consistent basis. And Mr. Puccinio owns the lot directly to the east, and Mr. Andrews was well aware of Mr. Puccinio's intended uses when his lot was sold to Mr. Puccinio. A bit of an anecdote, I was talking to my wife this morning, and she was asking me about vacation. She was, you know, she was asking me about my evening. Are you going to be home to help with the kids, is the question I got. I said, no, I have it here. What's it about? My wife's a pretty smart woman, but she says, well, what's, what's the, what's the matter about it? And I said, well, you know, it's, it's tree splitting into firewood. And she goes, what? I said, well, it's, can, can you do? And she goes, start over. Okay. So I told her about the bylaw, and told her about the zoning district and its intended purposes. I told her about Joe's application for a contractor's yard and his proposed use. I told her what it comes down to is whether or not splitting wood falls within, for firewood, falls within the definition of a portable woodmill. She said, of course it doesn't. I told you she's a smart woman. Now, she said, what else could be for? I said, well, it could be for milling of construction materials. You could, you could plane, you know, logs to make, you know, to make construction timber. And she goes, who does that? People do that? Now, the reason I'm telling you this story is it got me thinking. In all of my life, I have never once milled construction material. I have split wood. Then I thought about other people I know that do similar things. I don't know anyone who has milled construction material. I know plenty of people that split wood, either by hand or with a splitter. Then I thought about the area we're in, not just the agricultural district, not just Old Meeting House Road, but about the town of Valmont, about the Cape. I don't know many places around here, other than maybe Batello's, that mills their own construction material. I do know lots of places where wood is split. So when we think about common usage and the meaning of the bylaw, I think it's important to keep this in mind. I don't believe the bylaw refers to milling construction lumber or is exclusive to milling construction lumber because it's not something that happens. I don't believe it refers to running a saw or just doing simple construction on the site either because you wouldn't require permitting or, or a stop order if somebody was running... either, because you wouldn't require permitting or, or a stop order if somebody was running a saw in a non-agricultural district where you might not have a portable woodmill allowed. I think it's referring to an operation like Mr. Buschiano has envisioned. The result of this determination, the result of this appeal, is obviously of very significant importance to Mr. Buschiano. He's open to the board's suggestions. He's open to the board's conditions. I hope that the information we've been, we've been presenting tonight is sufficient to address your concerns and questions, and I hope that you have enough information here to overturn the building commissioner's appeal. I, of course, would be happy to address any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. I guess we'll start with all the questions.
I don't have any questions right now.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any.
Attorney? We're here to overrule the building commissioner's decision.
You're not there to overrule anything. You're there to make a determination of this appeal, whether it to be to uphold or to overturn.
Same thing, I think.
Well, it's not, because you've already stated something, so it's one or the other.
All right. What may not be applicable, this tree farm is not going to be in existence for several years. So how could you have, I thought that's what you said, maybe 10, 20 years to grow trees, sufficient for logging? I don't know. How then can you have an accessory use for permitted use that doesn't exist?
Because we're talking about it being accessory to the contractor's yard. The contractor's yard is a permitted use.
Contractor's yard?
Yes.
Then what's the agricultural zone for?
I mean, it is, it is zoned agriculturally, which allows for a special permit for contractor's yard. So that becomes a permitted use once it's obtained.
Okay.
Now, he intends, he intends to continue growing tree farming. He intends to use the site for other agricultural uses, because the agricultural zoning district allows you to have more than one primary use. But the primary use that we're talking about this being accessory to is the contractor's yard in the short term. Long-term, it might be accessory to other uses, but in the short term, it's accessory to the contractor's yard, of which raw wood from felling trees and clearing lots, which is what the contractor's yard permits, his business to do, is a byproduct. And rather than, rather than paying to dump those materials, rather than paying however much to dump those materials, making them into a usable asset.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
So these multiple lots, they're all zoned agricultural, is that correct?
They are. So it's, it's, we have gone back to the planning board. Originally, this was three separate lots, and this was, it was a master plan that we actually modified the subdivision and re-merged the three lots. This is a separate lot that he also owns, really, but we're talking about this lot. We're not talking about, he's not seeking to split wood on this, on the front lot, just the one outlined in orange here, 350 Old Meeting House Road, which is the former Hike and Way lots.
Right.
But the short answer to your question is yes, this is all zoned agriculturally.
All zoned agricultural, and the lot that's been highlighted in orange, that's where the contractor's yard is.
That's correct.
And the small lot on the bottom right, like you said, we have been busy in that area, so I took another site visit, and that is where the, the trees are growing.
Yep, and I, and that, those have all gone in in the past four months, and I think, I think Joe's done a fantastic job. I think it really looks beautiful over there.
And zoning allows, even if that's a separate lot, it allows for the accessory use of using that for woodworking on the, on the lumber lot? I'm sorry, on the contractor's lot?
I believe so, but, you know, what I'm, what we're trying to say tonight is what we're running, because I mean, he's, I think the, the long-term plan is going to be to grow on this lot as well. He's planted these trees here. I think long-term, there's going to be trees growing on this lot as well. Is that fair to say, Jim? Yeah. And so while being able to use the log splitting for trees growing on site is a long-term goal, I think it can be approved as accessory to the contractor's yard, as well as to the byright uses for agricultural eventually.
Okay. Does the board have any more questions, or Suri?
Just one question. So has the explanation then changed since last meeting that it's not accessory to the trees on the front lot?
It's been clarified.
So, so why don't you explain the difference between your statements at last meeting versus this one, just so I get the clarification?
Because I had the chance to speak with my, my client a little bit more, and we had a chance to clarify what the long and short-term plans of the property were. I also had a chance to sit down and think through a little bit more with my client about what this is accessory to. And we can talk about it being accessory eventually to the agricultural, but in the short term, the contractor's yard is a permitted use. And an accessory use has to be, can be accessory to a permitted use. And because we have obtained a special permit from the planning board, it is now a permitted use. And that's where, certainly in the short term, most of that wood that might be split is going to come from us, from the contractor's yard usage. So I don't mean to be cute when I say it's been clarified. It has, the explanation has, of course, changed, but because we've had a chance to clarify the explanation.
And if no trees are ever grown on that for splitting, what happens if they use it for greenhouse?
I think it could still be used as accessory to the contractor's yard, because that's really what we're, in the short term, that's what we're asking, and that might be a longer term project. I don't know any reason why we couldn't split trees coming from 348 on 350, or we couldn't merge the lots at some point if we chose to do that. But I don't want to overcomplicate this.
Did you have a question?
Sure.
If I remember correctly, you said at the last hearing that trees will be coming from other sites to the contractor's yard now to split logs. Is that true?
Well, I mean, when Joe, when Mr. Buschiano clear, you know, cleans up another site, when he's landscaping another site.
So the product's going to be brought into this property?
Much, much like the contractor's yard, where you'd have mulch or loam brought in, and then sold from there.
Okay.
Contractor's yards allow for the stockpiling of goods?
I know. I know the bylaw.
I'm just, I need to say it, though.
Need to get it on record. Any other questions from the board?
No, I think the information they supplied shows that the machinery is relatively small. It's not, it's not a big plant.
I'll just turn it over to any comments from the public right now, and then we can have some board discussion about this. Does anyone in the public wish to speak in favor or against? Could please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Mike D'Souza, 39 Crocker Road, and presently the Vice President of Midway Trappin' Ski Club, as we're beat to death here that we've been back and forth with this. Director Butt is obviously of the property, and we're in full support of whatever he wants to do on the property. I mean, you look at, you look what he's done so far in the place. He's going to be a good steward of the property. We have no problem with it.
Thank you, Mike. And you're speaking on your behalf of the...
He's the Vice President. If the President had a previous engagement, he couldn't make it tonight, so this is what you get.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay.
I did want to note that there were a few letters of support that were submitted between the last hearing and tonight. So, given, given how important this is to my client, I would only ask that if you could have board discussion prior to closing the hearing.
I think that's appropriate. Thank you. All right. And I think we will turn it over to board discussion now. Just a reminder that this was an appeal from the building commissioner's decision, so I think our conversation should be focused on that. Does anyone want to lead us off?
Yeah, I will. I, you know, I, I, this is a tough one, but I agree with the building commissioner that this is a, that this is not a sawmill as, as outlined in the bylaw. The bylaw may be archaic. There's a way to change that, a citizen's petition, and change the bylaw to include woodcutting as a specific accessory use. You know, that's how I feel about this. I think he made the correct decision, and I'm going to support him on it. So I don't think it's one and the same.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, given the testimony you heard tonight about the vagaries of the definitions, how do you come to that same conclusion?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good point. It's, it's very close, but I don't believe that it's what the people in the Towne Falmouth intended when they included the language "sawmill" at the time that the bylaw was developed. But Attorney Clower's presentation was fantastic, and I think that he would, if he were to articulate that at a town meeting, I don't see any reason why the bylaw couldn't be amended to include this use. But for the year and now, I'm going to, I'm going to go with the building commissioner's determination.
The, the case law that was submitted in the file just doesn't seem to pertain in general to the situation, and I, I haven't heard any new information that would lead me to overturn the building commissioner's decision. I mean, there is a big difference between a mill and a splitter. And there's a difference between dressed wood and split wood. And I, you know, I think they're stretching the definition to get it accessory now to the contractor's yard, and now, and now separating the front portion, when last time it was, the argument was, you know, I'm going to be growing trees on site, and it's mainly for that use. And that seems to have gone by the wayside.
If they eliminate the property line, does that, I mean, you still go that the bylaw itself is, has to be strictly interpreted?
Yeah, I think so. And even what you can grow there, what's planted there now on site, I mean, you're talking, you know, years of growth before you can even harvest. So it's not...
And it's not about that. It's about the splitting of logs versus the milling of
Could you say that again? Sorry. Suri?
I said, the appeal is about splitting logs versus milling.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and for what we've seen, even what's been submitted in the file, I mean, even visually, there's a difference between milling the lumber versus splitting lumber.
Yeah, this is splitting the logs, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just can't get there.
Jerry, you seem to be leaning the other way.
Yeah, I think I am leaning in favor of overturning the building commissioner's decision. And I am too, because I think this is obviously a splitter.
I'm sorry, so you'd be in favor of upholding the decision, or?
Overturning, he said.
Overturning it. Okay.
Because what they supplied is obviously splitting. There's no milling here.
And I tend to agree with Bob and Paul. As archaic as the definition may be, it is there. So I'd be in support of upholding the building commissioner's decision. As far as the applicant's plans for the property go, I think it's fantastic. It's agriculture zoned. I think it's a great use of the property, but when it comes to the plain language in our zoning, I don't think it supports the operation. Paul, like you said, if they were to go ahead and have language adjusted through town meeting and the planning board, I think it'd be a fantastic, fantastic application and a great improvement to our bylaws in general in town. But as far as this goes, I, I can't just get there. So Jerry, do you want...
No, I think with three in favor of upholding, and I think we're just, I, I don't think I could add anything. I look at footnote two, we ought to avoid an absurd result when the language is susceptible to sensible meaning. Time have changed, and, you know, it's, I understand and respect, I'm usually, I try to go by the books, but I also think, you know, with time comes. I remember we were calling Windturbans windmills a while back. So I, I don't think I have, I don't think I could convince the other three members. I don't know if Attorney Clower may want to come back up and try one more time.
Okay.
Tilting at windmills, right?
Turbans.
Turbans. I'm not sure what information I can present that hasn't already been presented. I mean, to Mr. Dugan's point, the case law is not that relevant. That's the point. There isn't much relevant case law. The reason that case law was submitted is to show that the terms lumber and firewood have largely been used interchangeably, largely is not the correct term, has been used interchangeably in the past. It's been used interchangeably in court decisions because there is no set definition of lumber in our bylaw. So what I was trying to give you examples of is other situations where lumber has been defined to include firewood. I think Jerry had an interesting point. I think that, you know, it is, I don't know, I mean, when the bylaw, the 1947 bylaw, Towne Falmouth zoning bylaw included portable woodmills, and it's been carried forward since then. There's no, nothing I can, well, I don't have the bylaws prior to 1947. I only, we only have so much storage space at the office. But I, I don't know what the town meeting discussion was when that language was provided. I know what I think of when I think of a portable woodmill. I know what I think of when I think of common usages. And I use the example I gave earlier. I don't know a single person who mills construction lumber. I know plenty of people who split wood, whether it be for residential or commercial purposes. That being said, I have three people who are saying they don't necessarily agree with overturning the decision. That's a steep hill decline. If there's additional information that can be provided, if there's additional conditions that can be provided, I'd be happy to hear them and see if we can accommodate them. I think that, to Mr. Dugan's point about whether or not the front lot is included in this, I mean, the, the bylaw allows for agricultural uses, which include farms, include harvesting of trees, include growing of trees, but they also include other permitted uses. If I made an ill-shaped argument in the past, I'd ask you not to hold it against me now when I'm making what I think is the correct one. Because the bylaw allows for an accessory use to be used, an accessory with a permitted use, and a contractor's yard is a permitted use. And what he's creating is a byproduct that that can be made productive. And by taking that byproduct and, and splitting it, and doing it in a way that's conducive to the agricultural zone, in line with the surrounding area, and, and in a way that, that is natural to what we're looking at on the zone and looking at with contractor's yards. Contractor's yards, you can have loam brought in, and you can age that loam, or you can have mulch brought in, and you can process that mulch, and then you can sell it on other sites. This is the exact same situation reversed. He's, he's creating the byproduct. He's bringing it, and he's making it productive. I don't think this is any different from, from other contractor yard usages, and I think it's in line with what is both envisioned and allowed for by the zoning bylaw. That being said, you five are the ones making the decisions, and I need four of you to agree with me. And unless I just sway Terry and Rob, TJ and Rob, I'm not sure what to, what else to say, or what else I can do. If there's additional information, I'd love to know what could be provided.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. And I, and I don't think anyone's faulting you for, you know, developing your argument further on behalf of your client. And the whole reason why this was continued was so you could, you could provide more information to us. And obviously, with your discussions with your client, you were able to tell us just exactly what he envisioned for the property. And I know the case law was, there wasn't much case law on point, and we do appreciate how much time and effort you did putting in to find those rare cases that were out there. In terms of more information, I don't know if any more information could be presented. How does the board feel? Do we...
No, it wouldn't convince me. I just think we need...
Need a zoning change.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we need the language. We need that inserted into the bylaw. And he did a fantastic job for his client, and if he articulates the same thing at town meeting, it'll make perfect sense to the town meeting members.
Well, tomorrow's the deadline, so I know what I'm doing tomorrow morning.
Ten signatures.
You're out tomorrow morning, Paul?
Okay, so we are looking, Jerry, unless you were persuaded either way, I think we're still looking at three to two here.
So we have to close the hearing and take a vote?
So a vote needs to be taken.
Right.
You have to close the hearing.
We have to close the hearing and then have a vote.
It's a motion to close.
I'll second.
Okay, that was motion to close by Bob and second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And guess Bob or Paul, if either one of you want to make the motion to uphold the building commissioner's decision?
I'll make a motion to uphold the building commissioner's decision.
I'll second.
It was made by Bob and second by Paul. And we'll have to come up with some...
All those in favor?
Although, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All those opposed.
Aye.
Okay, so that was three to two. Did you speak out?
So motion fails. Do you want to go the other way and see if anybody switches? Or it's pretty firm?
I, I, pretty firm, I'm not...
So the appeal's denied, basically?
Oh, you mean the other people.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we need language...
Kevin, get your plan, hon.
We need language for denial, or do you have it?
No, it's done.
Oh, that's it? You don't have to write?
The appeal didn't pass.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
We'll wait for Ken to come back up.
Oh, that makes sense.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Climate Foundation, and I believe, Mr. Clerk, that there's a letter requesting a, further continuation.
They requested continuation to March 15th. Brian Wall, attorney for Climate Foundation, is working with Assistant Town Council Pat Harris, and they've agreed to the continuation if the board will vote it to March 15th.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to continue. O sit 86-17 to March 15th here in town. Nope, you need to make it. Someone needs to make it.
I'll, I'll make the motion to continue 86-17 to March 15th, uh, 6:30 here at town.
Okay. Ed, you want to second that, or can you... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, so...
Thank you.
All of you folks out there, come back, March 15th.
I think she got it. Minutes?
December 7th, the day of infamy, uh, and December 14th.
Poor dog keeps barking. That poor dog's been barking through the whole hearing.
Yeah, I know.
I think, so we have to accept them, I think?
It's not that cold, though.
I'm sorry, I was...
Where, minutes, December 7th? Has everyone...
I was caught manning on the dog barking. It's very, very sad.
Well, we'll check them out when we leave.
December 7th? Okay.
So has, was I here December 7th? I was not here December 14th.
No. Were you here? I don't think you, was he here?
On the 7th, I might have been.
I'll move to accept. I think I reviewed all of them.
The minutes show who was present.
Yeah. But I think I usually comment pretty quickly.
Good for you.
So Jerry, you, you just affirmed approval for December 7th?
And for, one at a time, yes.
We have to one at a time, yes.
So, moved to accept. We usually take a second from someone?
Second, please.
As long as that somebody was here?
As long as it's someone who's here. Paul, were you here?
Yeah, I was here.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes of December 7th are approved. Now we're to December 14th. I was not here, so I...
I'm pretty sure I was here.
I was here.
Then I'll move to approve.
Second. Moved by Jerry, seconded by Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
With Ken recusing, or abstaining, excuse me.
Okay. Item two in the open meeting, procedural rules and policies. Any, Suri, anything to report?
I'm sorry, where are we?
Procedural rules and policies.
One of these days, hopefully, the board will get to it because there really needs to be some changes.
Probably won't be this day.
Yep. Will not be.
Okay, now, Board of Discussion, Board of Selectmen, Joint Meeting coming up, 27th of January...
Open, we're in open meeting, Board of Selectmen, Joint Meeting.
What's on the agenda?
So the items on the agenda...
It's a draft agenda.
A draft agenda was circulated.
Yes.
Items on the agenda included the impaired estuaries, or some kind of review of by the water, um...
Update on the impaired waters by the water quality.
Right.
Discussion of accessory apartment bylaw.
It's not the discussion of the accessory bylaw, I don't believe, was the thing. They were talking about the septic systems and...
Right, no, there's two items. One item was...
Better coordination or what?
Discussion of impaired water body.
Right, water sheds, yes.
Do we have any particular comments, thoughts in advance on that?
I don't, you know, without a full discussion of what the facts are, you know...
No, I...
So we'll wait and see that during the meeting.
I think the reason why this is on the agenda is because Jerry suggested that somebody else be invited.
Right, well, hold on, let's, let's get to the...
Because it's a draft agenda. We don't know exactly what it's going to be or the vision, so...
So, was, Jerry, were you asking for people to be invited pertaining to that discussion?
Yes, I specifically asked, based on the review of the draft agenda, which I didn't realize hadn't been circulated, that the affordable housing be part of item three or four. But I was sending...
So as an additional item?
No, to be invited.
To be invited to speak.
But in, in pertaining to which of the agenda...
The discussion on, I don't have...
On the apartments?
On the accessory apartments.
Right, so that's the second item.
There was four or five items.
So the only thought I had about that is, it's really the Board of Selectmen's show, and I'm sure we can make the suggestion, but there is the risk that if you get too many, as it is, we have, what, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board...
Conservation.
Conservation.
And water quality.
So there's nearly 25 people, and I don't think you, you know, you get much beyond that.
If it was, if it was a regulatory meeting, but they invited one non-regulatory committee to participate, if it was, and nothing against the water quality, this was on, on regulatory participation, the agenda item specifically said better coordination, I think.
It's on there. It's on there. The water quality is there for the water sheds. They asked for it, I believe.
Look, there's nothing that precludes any other boards from coming. It's an open, public meeting.
I think maybe a better issue might have been, as an individual, I probably may comment on the agenda further. I may not. I'm not asking the board to vote on it, but I think, you know...
The email that I got from Susan Moran and Julie and Susie, who so thanked her and everything, was that she'd be open to committee chairs making any other suggestion, so, which is why I suggested...
Oh, okay.
That it be brought to this board and have the board discuss.
So what's the board's pleasure? I mean, I think these meetings are unwieldy in large as it is. They are open meetings, so there's nothing that says that...
That precludes them from coming.
Affordable housing, people can't show up and make comments.
Well, I think it's, I think the accessory bylaw definitely goes to marketable rate and affordable housing. To have a discussion on that without the one committee that's probably as much vested as the other regulatory committee or the water quality committee, I think it might have been an oversight. I did follow up and say, maybe they already discussed it. Uh, you know...
Well, and that's why I said, we don't know what the vision of their agenda is.
Is, correct.
So you might want to suggest, well, if we're going to talk about, I mean, the bylaw is the bylaw. It was passed a year ago, almost, not quite. We know the issues that have come up with it that really don't have anything to do with the Affordable Committee. It has to do with the Board of Health, the septic, and the water quality management. And I think that's what they're...
But people can't, correct me if I'm wrong, if I understand, the Board of Health has made a decision within their authority to say that a, a separate building, if it's not on the sewer, needs to put an advanced system in.
They're saying whether it's included in the dwelling or a separate building, they're saying that, in essence, it's two dwellings. They don't look at it as accessory. So anytime you have an accessory apartment where you're adding a bedroom, or even, case in point, one that has four bedrooms existing, and four bedrooms after the accessory apartment gets put in, you still have to redo the septic system if you're in a coastal pond or a water resource to do alternative septic system.
Regardless of the number of bedrooms.
Right. No, I'm saying, regardless, even if there's not an increase in bedrooms.
But I think it, that could more adversely impact the affordable, it may be affordable housing.
Well, this is where it plays on with the Board of Health and the water quality.
I, I agree, but I think also maybe...
Well, whatever. It's up to you guys.
Well, no, if people don't want to vote or people want to, that's fine.
Yeah, it's up to you guys if you guys...
We just wanted to bring up, uh...
My feeling is, you have a legitimate concern, and the Board, the Affordable Housing Committee should come to the meeting.
If they know about it. If they know about it.
Right.
It's posted.
It's public information.
A lot of things public, but, you know...
I guarantee you, there'll be lots of, there'll be people there.
Oh, there has to be just all the boards?
I know, I know at least one or two on the Affordable and CPC that'll be there.
Oh, okay. You've answered my question, then, obviously.
There was one very specific language concern I had, which came up at the hearing that we were, I think it's still alive, right?
Should we talk about it?
But the language issue was that, in the interpretation by the attorney of the bylaw, it says "subject to" the coastal pond overlay district bylaw.
I think that's something that you're, you might want to...
And "subject to" means, as the bylaw's written, it's five acres or more, or five lots or more, not whether it's in the coastal pond overlay district or not. And I think it's just a language thing.
Yeah, that's something that you...
I'm sure the intent, as it was written, was that if you're in, because obviously no lot, single lot, with a accessory building is ever going to be subject to that bylaw under those criteria.
Yeah.
Are we on a slippery slope?
Yes.
I mean, uh...
Well, it's a generic issue.
It's...
So I'm just saying...
I guess we could discuss it on Saturday.
Right. I think that's, it's a word, it's a small wording change. You change "subject to" to the word "within"...
Perfect.
Then you're done.
Perfect. And you can suggest that.
And I will. But I wanted to alert the board that...
Or do a petitions article now before the warrant closes tomorrow.
I wanted to alert the board about my thinking. I don't know what the board thinks, but... Anyway, so with respect to Jerry's concerns, what's the board's feeling? Do you want to make...
I'll withdraw it if they've already come.
A formal statement, or do you want to...
I know a couple people that keep an eye on things like this. They were there at the last one, they're there at every other meeting.
So they can speak for themselves.
But, I mean, still, if the board wants to ask the Board of Selectmen to invite that committee, then that's what the board's talking about.
If we don't, we just won't vote on it. I mean, vote one way or the other seems kind of harsh. I mean, we vote not to invite them or to invite them, or not to invite them.
We certainly wouldn't vote not to invite them.
No, 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 yeah. It's just if you get a general consensus that the chairman should contact the Board of Selectmen to...
If, if the board has that feeling, I will be happy through Suri to submit a letter.
Huh?
That means Suri writes the law.
I'll sign.
I'll save Suri time and say, you know, I don't think you need to do it.
Okay. What's the general consensus of the board, yea or nay?
Yes. Sure.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I don't know if you need it, because, I mean, with the website now, just about everybody gets updated agendas, but...
Yes to direct a letter to the Selectmen to ask the Affordable Housing Committee to attend as well.
Oh, yea on that one.
Sure, I guess.
Okay, so that's consensus.
That's the consensus?